All right, good evening. I'm gonna call the Select Board meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. We're almost into spring, or we are in the spring, right? Mother Nature has us sliding. Yeah, so, uh, welcome. It's, uh, it's great to be back here. It's been a whirlwind couple of weeks for me, so traveling for business and coming back and so... All right, let's jump right into our agenda here. Want to review and approve the minutes for the April 7th, 2022 meeting. Did I have you somewhere?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of April 7th, 2022.
All right, and I'll second it. Any questions, adjustments, or otherwise? So, I, yeah, I see one misspelling, yeah. Under, uh, minutes, uh, or the meeting was called the order. Where it says Lisa, it should be Leece. Uh, any other adjustments that you guys can see?
Looks good, actually.
All right, yeah, I think so. Um, all those in favor of accepting the minutes with the one correction, uh, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? All right, the minutes are approved with one.
Change, edit on Lisa.
All right. Uh, any adjustments to the agenda? Or do we wanna kinda just bomb down through it?
I think we're good.
Okay.
We're good, Aaron?
It looks good to me. All right. So first up, uh, adopt rules of procedure for the Select Board meetings. Uh, just one of the things that kinda popped up, uh, in my mind was to try to get us to be able to keep, I think, to a schedule so that we're not spending all night at meetings and such. Uh, so I was able to find, um, model, um, rules of procedure for, um, for Select Boards and for public town meetings, um, on the VLCT website. So I, um, did some adjustments and edits and wanted to share that with the Select Board members so that we could talk about, um, if these sound appropriate to put in place, so that it kinda spells out, um, some of our typical meeting organizational things. So when are our metering meetings, things like that? I think we've got that in policies already. Uh, but it really helps us to keep it organized a little bit more so everybody knows what, you know, the procedures are for meetings moving forward. Items like, uh, what, um, what the agendas will be made up of. I mean, I'm not gonna read through this line by line, but where we, where we're gonna post the agendas, when we're gonna post them, and, uh, then some general, you know, procedures for meetings. Again, pretty standard stuff, just kinda pulls together and documents some of the things that we're doing. Uh, but also, I think, um, puts some, puts some order to things, so. Wanted to see what, how the board felt about these.
My suggestion would be to look it over and bring it back at the next board meeting for adoption if, um, none of the Select Board has any changes with it at that time.
Okay. Uh, I think I'm okay with that. Uh, I think, uh, again, it doesn't hurt to have some folks look it over, make sure that everything sounds okay. Tristan, what do you think?
Yeah, yeah, it's good. Yeah, let's review it and then get a chance to read it and, um...
Okay.
Look it over and then, um, we can either make an adjustment or make a change and then put it into effect.
Next, okay. Um, I'll send it out to electronically so that, uh...
We have a copy.
Yep. And if there's anything in here that you guys feel that needs to be changed, you can email me between meetings and we'll adjust it and then we can, uh, we can look to adopt it for, um, the next meeting.
Perfect.
All right. Uh, very good. Uh, next, we've got, uh, approved town budget for, uh, 2022 and, uh, signed warning. So part of that, um, is, um, let me just make sure I get all of this squared away. Um, so first, as far as, uh, wages are concerned, I've got an updated, um, wage, uh, form, payroll form, uh, for us to review as part of that. But in essence, town clerk, town treasurer, and town constable wages are gonna be reduced to, uh, an hourly wage of $24.50 an hour. Um, and, uh, that, uh, also, we wanted to make sure that we, uh, included, because we have the new librarian, what her new wage is, so it's...
Which is less.
Which is, which is less, correct, than, than, uh, than the previous, uh, librarian was making.
So that's a 1300. 1306.
Yep.
Yeah, 1306 on the librarian.
Correct, yep. Just for our, her hourly wage change, correct?
Yep.
Um, so just going down through here, so, uh, part of what the new budget that everybody has a copy of, it, uh, we've removed the painting on the town clock, uh, for this year. Um, again, adjusted the library wages. The ambulance, um, contract was increased to reflect the actual contracted cost. That was updated. Community building reserve appropriation was reduced, um, significantly. And then we also reduced the constable durable equipment reserve appropriation for the year. Um, so that brings a total budget, um, it decreases the total budget by $22,275 from the original amount, amount that we had presented, uh, on Town Meeting Day. So, uh, with that, um, I think I'm gonna start with, um, just, I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the changes to, um, wages that we've talked about here, of reducing the wage to $24.50 for the treasurer, town clerk, and constable.
Wait on it. With actual motions per certain things, it would just be one motion to, uh, accept the budget as presented, right?
I would think so.
Is that, okay?
I would think it ought to make individual.
Okay.
Am I right, Lisa? It was just a...
Okay, all right, well, I'll correct my motion. It's all good. So, um, I'll move to accept the revised budget for 2022.
Okay. I second it. So if you're making a motion and moving it or whatever, I don't know if we need to make a motion. How do we need to proceed with that?
I think we just... Motion second and then open it for discussion?
Yeah, I believe so.
So, any discussion? Any discussion?
No, 'cause it looks good to me. That's what we were gonna present, so...
Um, I think, uh, I think overall, it's, we've made some, uh, conscious decisions about what needs to be reduced in the budget to, that makes sense.
Adjust the situation.
Correct. Yep, exactly.
Is that what for the overall budget?
The, the overall budget? I did not say what the overall budget number was.
Just the overall deduction is 22,275.
Yep, overall reduction. And then I, I don't have the numbers for exactly what that means for what's raised by taxes.
That's what we're gonna present.
Yep. We'll get all that together when we do the warning. Yep. Um, I don't, I didn't see it. Is it?
Yeah, but we don't.
Lisa, did you, did you give us that? No, I don't, I don't have it.
It's stuck on something. It's probably stuck on something somewhere.
It could be, uh...
Agenda. I have my sheet. I didn't put anything in my...
I don't see it either.
Yeah, I don't see it, Lisa. Yeah, we, I think at this point, we'll, we'll, just accepting the budget, we'll warn it once we have it, we know it. The warning just needs to have our signature on it.
Just seeing the signatures, we can come in on Saturday and sign it. I mean, yeah.
So, uh, so I guess if there's no other discussion, I'll call it to a vote. All those in favor with, uh, accepting the revised budget for 2022 with the decrease of $22,275 signifies by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Okay, so that's the, uh, that's the budget. And then we'll, if, when Carrie's coming just a little late, right? So we'll just, maybe before we head out of here, we can have the warning ready to sign. All right. ARPA elect standard allowance.
I move that the town of Groton make the one-time irrevocable decision to elect the standard allowance approach for our ARPA award in the amount of $289,360.41 to spend on the provision of government services throughout the period of the performance of the grant.
All right, I'll second that. So you wanna explain to me what that means?
Um, initially, the ARPA program was set up, and you remember?
Yep.
There was very specific shoehorn where you had to spend the money.
Yep.
Um, more of thi- this also, um, it's my understanding, makes the accounting and, um, of that money and, um, reporting of it.
Okay.
Makes, adopting the standard allowance makes that much easier. So that's the thought behind this.
Gotcha. So making sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's?
Crossing our t's. This is, again, this, making a motion on this, this is from the ARPA trainee and, and, um, making motion on this isn't required, but it, it's best practice.
Gotcha. Okay. Any other questions, discussion? All right. Um, all those in favor of, uh, accepting the motion? As presented?
Yep. Aye?
Aye. All those opposed? All right. Motion passes, passes, and then we can move on with that.
Tristan and then Nicole can...
Oh, that was a motion, yes?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll move into, uh, department updates. So, uh, Mike, we're gonna start with the NEK CUD and talk a little bit about the broadband infrastructure proposal, which I need to find my copy of. Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Good bank, Mike.
Thank you.
So I'm assuming you're kinda updating us, like, where we're at, 'cause you talked about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Could come back with, uh, additional proposals, um, extended proposals.
Okay.
You can go over that. Tristan, I took your words so hard about hearing people from people, so first we have that.
There's a survey that we did, um, there's a couple extra copies here if people wanna see it, uh, where we hit the people that are impacted for, basically inquire, is this important to you and why sort of thing? We got, uh, 36 responses. I think there's 43 houses that we reached out to, which I think speaks to, um, how interesting of a topic this is, like, people, in terms of getting that sort of reaction over a three-day window. We can go through this if you want. I mean, you know, we've got about 100%, uh, well, almost 100% that are interested in higher, faster, more reliable internet. We got input on pricing. About 94% of the folks don't object. In fact, they're encouraging the town of Groton to pursue ways of accelerating, getting them broadband, which I think is a, um, pretty strong statement in terms of, uh, taking action. What's also interesting is the state puts a ton of priority on, uh, priority addresses. So these are K through 12, teleworkers, uh, telehealth needs. And, uh, what we uncovered were 18 teleworkers in this quarter, uh, that the state doesn't know about. We uncovered some people that had telehealth needs the state doesn't know about. And if you flip to page three, um, we've got 16 houses that have flagged they got kids that are too young for school, but will have K through 12 students down the road. So, um, I think, uh, you know, the overall sense is there's an exceptionally strong sense, or strong support for taking action soon. Um, most of the people would sign up, uh, the majority would. There's some pricing, uh, concerns around the two for packages, the 79 and, uh, $102 a month package. Uh, NEK broadband has put together this affordability committee, so they're gonna be coming back with some solutions that will probably drop that 20-ish a month.
So when you say a package, what exactly does that mean? Like, is that internet?
Yeah, that would be, that's straight fiber internet. So it would be the equivalent of signing up for spectrum, uh, internet service.
Okay, so you, so just internet?
Yeah, right now it's just internet. In the future, there could be phone lines, all right? But right now it's just pure fiber.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand.
Pure fiber internet.
I think, too, a lot, a lot of telecommunications companies are pushing towards fiber anyway for telephones as well. Um, I know, I, you know, I've got, I've got a spectrum at home and it's all cable DSL.
Yeah.
So you're running the phone now with the same line that you're on the, the...
Yeah, I think that's what, that's one of the bonuses you get with, um, fibers to viable and the fact that people will move into voip and off of landlines as well, because they can count on it. You can't count on your DSL internet service.
Right, right.
Yeah. So, um, uh, I, I mean, I think there's, uh, you know, and the other thing that they're doing to, well, the other thing that already exists is the State of Vermont affordability plan, which offsets $30 off a month. So I think if, you know, between the, the State of Vermont money, between NEK broadband getting created and dropping down into an additional lower bucket for folks which are, they're actively pursuing right now, I think we could probably have 80%, 85% of this audience signing up to the service. Uh, which, right now, they're all using DSL. Uh, over there, there's a couple people who have Starbuck as well. Some of the folks up on Ann's Road and on the Great Road have it right now. But even they are recording the fact that it's giving them better speed. It's not necessarily giving them better reliability. Starbuck kind of fluctuates, especially in a bad weather.
So how many people does this affect total, like, a total number to get this main thing that we're talking about, 40 to 60 grand?
Yep. So if you go to the proposal there, which is that other document, um, and you go to page three, it's talking about the core opportunity. So the core opportunity is the group that we surveyed right now. This Great Road, Minor Hill, Powder Spring, Ann's Road.
Yep.
Um, and it's 60 premises there. 20 apparently don't have any service, okay? Um, and then seven of which are priority addresses. So these are all K through 12 streaming addresses.
So that being said, so 40 or 60, depending on Peachum or not?
Yep.
Or not is where we go to get that main line through. I'm just trying to understand this. I know you've got all this information, but I'm more like just the facts and figure out what's what. So then, once that system is sent in, then, let's say, the rest of the town, what is...
Yeah, so, so right now, we've got the core map there, Peachum.
Okay.
Uh, you, Tristan, you missed the briefings last September.
I did.
Yeah, um, with the build-out maps and timelines and that.
Yep.
The, the core map there is building a redundant loop across this upper part of, in the central part of the county.
Okay.
Rod is a one-off backbone extension line that is dropping down.
Okay.
We're in the southwest corner of 54 towns that are part of this group, okay? Um, right now, uh, if we do nothing, sit tight, we will see something in nine attendants.
And that's...
Which is, yeah, we'll discuss, and then we'll discuss that, you know?
And that's a little cost, right? I think that's...
Yeah, that's a slight weight.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I'm just trying to look at the broad picture, the future, and what, what this gets us and what point in, and how quickly and how not quickly and if we have to pay more money and, and kind of that adjustment.
Yeah, so let me, let me, just setting it up. So if we go forward with this four, okay? It'd be 60-ish or 40-ish, right? Depending on whether or not Peachum does it, because the line's coming down from Peachum, okay? Peachum jumps in, which I just spoke to their folks today. Uh, there's a strong probability that everything's lining up there. They just, will probably won't get to it until the main Select Board meeting, okay? But it is, uh, it's lining up to happen up there. I think that said, we need to go in thinking that we're going forward.
Okay.
Uh, and I know Peachum, I hate Varnett as well, what they're doing. But if we go forward with the core and spend that 40 or 60, we're gonna have homes, they're gonna build out, they're gonna accelerate, building this backbone extension down to, down to Rod. And we're giving them a reason to do it, okay? Um, and, well, along the way, they're gonna hook up homes, okay? So we're gonna get 60 homes hooked up by, okay? In a year, probably a year and a half-ish timeframe, okay? And because we're building the infrastructure in Rod, the rest of Rod is gonna get fiber in four to five years, okay? We're giving them, and also another reason to extend lines and hook up additional homes, okay? Um, so if we decide to go forward, we're gonna have 60 homes get it in a year and a half-ish and the rest of Rod getting it in four to five years, years versus nine years or eight years, certainly.
So, so we don't really have any promissory thing on... Well, I'm just saying, so you spend the money, they will come, right? So it's, is, I'm just trying to see where, where we're at, you know, as a town. You know, I think personally it sounds a good idea to me and whatever, but I wanna make sure we're gonna get the rest of the town. I'm not so concerned about Varnett or whatever.
That's part of what they're offering. And I think coming out of last meeting, you know, I talked to a lot of people in the community about broadband and, you know, how, I think the value you gain in the survey was people just saving their hands out.
Saying, hey, well...
I mean, you go, you put those individual responses in terms of impact on lives and stuff like that, and you feel the pain. And so, I mean, I think, you know, the question mark of, you know, a year and a half strong is, I think, is being answered with the survey.
Yep.
And I, and I think, too, I mean, it's, it's an investment that will accelerate a plan that is there. Yes, I think it's an investment, I think, now, especially with, you know, the ARPA funds and the valley, we, we've kinda, you know, talked about earmarking a lot of those funds for the infrastructure project here, but with the Lake Grant, I think that opens, uh, opens us up to the opportunity to use this, you know, federal, federal funding for another, you know, I think, really worthwhile infrastructure project that allows us to, um, that allows us to accelerate and, and help our community, I think, especially because I, 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 and Mike, you, you probably know better, but in the next five years, we're not planning on probably having 4G or 5G, you know, cell service in Town Groton.
Yeah, I don't know about 4G. 5G is very problematic in the train.
Yep.
There was a rumor, and so, I mean, maybe something through VTEC, um, you know, fixed wireless, fixed wireless poles, Peachum hasn't allowed poles up there. Uh, I, I think Starbuck would be the other option. They have around $600-plus dollars of equipment and, you know, it's not reliable in the storms, things like that. And you have to have the right, you know, facing open stock to make it work or you've got a ton of trees.
So, and I think that's kinda my, my thing, right? So, um, right now, in today's technology, you can get, um, pretty good data download speeds through cellular service, which is the other option when it comes to internet infrastructure in, um, in, you know, the world right now. And the likelihood of us getting that technology to allow us, you know, to use our, you know, mobile devices for internet access is, I think, more limited than this type of infrastructure.
Yeah, I think the question is what I have and where you have, right? It's probably, doesn't make any sense to the public.
Yep.
It's what I guess. And we're saying we're using my sector as a, as a date.
What do you think, Aaron?
Yeah, I'm, I'm on board with that. I think, uh, internet is obviously, it's the way of the future. It's the way of, um... Yes, that, I'm one of those houses.
And you're on one of the extension lines.
Yeah.
I want to the extension options, so...
But, I mean, I, I've spoken with Mike outside of the meetings before and, you know, in my opinion, it's very much like the rural electrification program of the 30s where Groton's gotta pay for this, because there's no money in Comcast coming in. There's just not enough people to, to support it. So that's, I see this as an, and especially with, when you couple it with the ARPA funding.
Yeah, that's the big thing. I mean, we're not, it's, it'd be one thing, so...
Well, the Starbuck funding plus the national...
And the mat, yeah.
It's the, you know, $1 a street. Given the two different organizations that are matching $1, we put in the pot. So we're getting three times that, the pot there. And if you look at the equipment and the old tea cabinets and stuff that have been caved in, we're getting almost $900, $100, $200 or superior things.
Which, I think, yeah, absolutely, we need to upgrade Groton. It brings more people here to work and have businesses and be on their computers and do what they need to do, and us included.
I think it, it opens it up to, you know, we, we do have, you know, what's the right term that I wanna use? You know, we do have natural tourism in, in the state parks and you get more people that'll take two and three weeks, you know, of, you know, vacation from work, 'cause they can work remote for two of those weeks. And now they're bringing those dollars that they would spend at home for food, you know, those type of things. Now they're spending them in our, our community. So I think it, it does, there's a lot of impact, I think, you know, obviously for the people that will get better internet and high speeds, but also economic, um, development in the future makes a lot of sense.
So if we, we say yes, let's say, and Peachum says no, what does that mean? So how do they get here without, without dealing with Peachum?
They're gonna build right through, they're gonna run a backbone through Peachum.
Okay.
They're out towards, uh, Arton, Pre-Dale, they're gonna drive down there. But what they're gonna do is tie into a Velco communication line that sits up on Powder Spring Road up near Ann's Road, so there's a way, and then they're gonna create the network there. And Peachum's gonna have to wait.
So when's the, so when will we have, when's the final stage?
Yeah, they're really looking for decisions by May 31st, because they're making build, design, implementation decisions, right? Where they wanna start rolling things and, sure, and finalizing things. The NEK broadband director, Christopher Shute, is actually, uh, is available for Paul. I mentioned that in the past. She is being married this weekend, um, so she can be gone for about 10 days. We have a little pocket in the middle of May if you wanna talk to her live. And then she goes on audio for a week, uh, towards the end of May. But, so she's available. I, I think the other dynamic here are the other towns. You know, Rygate got presented with an option to lay up some of their roads based on us, okay? So if we build, okay, we're creating the ability for us, I, I don't know where Rygate's at at this point, but this just was presented to them. They're gonna be able to turn on some roads in their area. It's the Witherspoon Hall of Stone Zone. So there's that. So that's what I know, is the very interest, Peachum is very interested, okay? Varnett is, uh, somewhere in there.
Which, that's fine, yeah. I mean, that's, that's, that's fine with me. I feel like you, so you did some homework on this, you know, which is, is really, really wonderful and it seems like everybody I've talked to is all for it or whatever. Dan has a question.
I do.
It sounds like a great viewpoint, because Groton from Peachum to town. My question is, if you're going to appropriate funds in that, should we be accompanying date when this is gonna be going in? Because many of those dates don't make sense to me.
Yeah. That being said, is there anything we, we get locked, we, we know, your word?
If you're referring to a specific date, I think it's challenging, I mean, they're working through supply chain issues right now. I mean, I think we've got an targeted need to get forward or something like that, you know, we get it by this four. But this world right now has just received billions of dollars, so there's workforce issues, there's supply chain issues. My guess is, you know, I, I assume the date already slipped three months, in two months. So I think what we can do is obviously go back and say, hey, what, what's our zone? But I think they need to get forward.
So, I mean, I think I can get kinda wherever we're going here, and I think what, what I would like is, you know, even if it's a, you know, even if it's something we can say, you know, hey, we know that this is gonna start eighteen months from now. You know, what, what is it that we're going to, you know, kinda get it into a timeframe? Because when we do sign this, you know, we're, we are taking this money and we're giving it to, you know, I'm assuming NEK broadband to, to match up with everything to spend on. So when we put that money out, it would be good to kinda know, okay, what, who are they working with, what's, what is the plan? And then, you know, I would say, regular updates, if, if they're not able to give us a, a specific, you know, date, that, you know, we're not, we're gonna start this on, you know, December first of twenty twenty-three, which is eighteen months or so from now. Then, you know, what is it that we're getting communication on to make sure that the funding is there?
So how am I gonna go back with, expected start dates, sort of no later than start date?
Yeah, that would be, that would be good, because I think, I might get it, you know, it's, it's, it's. But you still gotta have a proposal, I mean, in the real world. So, do we pay, we, do we pay for this before we get it, or when it's done, then we move that money to that? How does that work? We prepay?
I don't know, I don't really. So I don't know the timeline, I think it probably needs to be implemented by the end of September, because that's when one of the matching sort of deadline expires, okay? But let me find out if when you need to do a wire transfer or write a chat.
It would be good to, by the way. Well, I just, I know from a business perspective, until the work's done, I don't get paid, and then I wait another month, three months, or whatever. So I'm just trying to see how, how, how this all works.
Yeah, their timeline right now is, is current estimate, late twenty twenty-three, so in terms of when it happens.
So that's the end of next year.
Yep.
So maybe it's a, no earlier than that date or something, and then, yeah, maybe it would be good to understand kinda what the, what the payment structure needs to be, how, you know, what, what the timing for that is. You know, if we make this commitment, when we accept this proposal, can we hold this money until the work actually starts and pay? Or when we have a confirmed date, that's when it gets paid, you know, whatever it needs to be. So I, I think just a little, we're a little bit more specific.
Yeah, I'm all for it.
I think we're, yeah, I think we're close, I think on.
Yeah, so let me go back with that information.
Okay.
Back to that earlier point, I think, they're important. We need to put that down in this part of the event, right, with more backhoe though, but better off than maybe, in terms of giving other places laid out quicker, so.
Which I, I would kinda feel, as a board member and as a taxpayer, is like, well, what's everybody else doing? And so, we'll go ahead if somebody else is gonna go ahead, but I don't know that we wanna go until somebody, whatever. So, so I get that too, but I know for, for my opinion, as a taxpayer and a selectman here, is like, it seems like everybody's, you know, in, up for it, and so on and so forth, and, um.
Yeah, I think, oh, to the, to the point, and we should move forward as comfortable, so let me get those into the top. But there could be a scenario where if we go, we trigger these other towns happening too.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, and I, and I think, you know, that is important for us to know that, but I definitely think, you know, we need to make the decision for Groton, and if Peachum joins in and, and we save some of that money, that's great. But I think it really comes down to, you know, if we think it's the right thing for Groton, let's do it. So, and I, and I think that's where, kinda where we are, is, you know, we are, I think, all, you know, prepared to approve it as long as we've got the right, the right info there, so.
I don't believe you'll be the only person going back saying, my municipality wants more information.
I just wanted to know when, when Peachum's in, because that's something that we're gonna be.
It, it is, but I, you know, I think, what, what I, what I kinda feel like is we're gonna beat around the bush with Peachum. So I'd rather say, you know, I'm willing to spend the sixty, sixty-one thousand dollars, and if Peachum comes in, we get to save that third of a month. And, and I, I really have been talking with Mike and kinda getting the feedback from what's going on with Peachum. There's a, I would say a high probability at this point that they're going to approve this proposal, and so, you know, I.
I can't believe Peachum won't go with everybody that's.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, they're, they're already gonna get some as part of the process, but this is, you know, everything's south of where that circle goes.
They need to go forward, they're gonna do a lot, because their, their OLT cabinet, which we have, which is where the cars, they're gonna connect that access, is, I think our cabinets are probably high.
Yeah.
And their OLT cabinet, they get funded off of that, so, because they don't have enough, I mean, they don't have enough money to turn out twenty-something OLT cabinets at seven hundred K.
Yep.
So Peachum's gonna wait a while, so they're kinda facing similar situation, which is gonna be a year and a half, two years, okay, for waiting.
Yep.
Even for their, for the time of four, and they don't do the extension, they're gonna be waiting.
Yep. So I would kinda say, come back with, with our, you know, come back with some more information on the, the, the kinda the dates and what we're looking at, and then we'll.
Yep.
Pull the trigger.
So, yep. Okay. Yeah, I can try to figure that out, and then we can, you know, and even if you're able to get, you know, get, you know, the revisions to the proposal, that, if you wanna get that to me ahead of it, if we can't, we can at least, we, we can discuss it, and I can, you know, make it bankable, just to let you know, yeah.
The other question is the core plus.
Which is the options, the additional options, right?
Another.
Yeah. So that, that was, with the two options that they were talking about there, it's, one for, for Minert Hill would be, what, sixty-eight hundred dollars?
Yeah, and the other is fifty-five.
Fifty-five thousand.
One gets five priority, and there's sixty-two, but the attraction of the mills is all the unserved houses up there, that don't even have forceless, um, service.
So where, where, what, so, okay, so now I'm confused again.
Page four. So, the, the initial proposal is for what we've talked about, right? It's down to Powder Spring, up Powder Spring, Mount Air Road. But there is the addition of, you know, for another fifty-five thousand dollars, you know, it runs out three oh two to Rickor Mills, three oh two to two thirty-two out to Rickor, uh, Rickor Mills. Is that Rickor Mills Road? Or is that, I think that's the road right out there, yep. So, but that's another fifty-five thousand. So, I mean, the other question is, is, and this is just me kinda thinking, is, do we, I, I'm, I'm, I think I'm good with us trying to move forward with the initial spur. But, you know, is this something that we can come back to when that's done and say?
I mean, I don't know if it makes sense to go survey that group or not, if you want to save five percent.
Any problems? Well, and I'm just more thinking, do we, do we wait until we've got the initial build out done, and then go, okay, now we're ready to move on to that next section? Yeah, yeah. That's the catch.
I mean, it's not the same, you can do it, it's just maybe fifty-five, or maybe a hundred and sixty-five, so.
Which, I mean.
And it's not taxpayer raised money.
One thing to do is to just, not worry about it the next thirty days, and, you know, buy a little bit more time into June, okay, or early July, and have to decide if you wanna make a decision. But if we definitely don't wanna do it, it might not firm, type of, for the cycle.
I'm, personally, as, as just a board member and whatever, I feel like spending forty to sixty thousand dollars to get it down here initially is, is an idea, but to spend a hundred thousand dollars is whatever, I'm not really, I'm not really into that.
Cause that turns into, yeah, it, it turns in, with, with that, it would end up being ninety-five, ninety-five thousand, basically, ninety-six thousand. If Peachum came in and, yeah.
Yeah, I just.
Yep. And then, I mean, I think that's kinda the, we, we still don't have, you know, the full understanding of what the amount for the, the drainage project's gonna end up being with all the material costs.
Yeah, and, yeah, I just, I feel like, we don't, we don't really, I, I'm a little nervous, cause I don't, you know, when you have a proposal and you're gonna come do something and whatever, you can say, okay, so this is all gonna happen like this, this, and this. And we're kinda saying, okay, so we're gonna give you forty or sixty grand, and whenever you get around to it, come get us.
So, so if I was to provide that information, then you'd be more comfortable?
Yep, I feel, yes.
Yeah, I've got that action, I have any. So, you know, from that with expected and start dates.
Yep. Yep.
So why don't we not worry about that, and is, or is surveying, or you wanna give some people?
No, I, I don't think, I, I think you're right, I think it's gonna, we're gonna get probably close to the same response if you surveyed folks out there. I, I think the bigger, I think the bigger concern is just, you know, are we willing to spend, you know, almost a hundred thousand dollars to do all of this? Or, you know, knowing that we spend, you know, forty to sixty thousand dollars now, and eighteen months potentially after we finish that project, these folks are gonna get sort of connection anyway, and it's still, you know, three to five years out from today, but.
Yeah, so that definitely can be a lot preserved, especially if we didn't have signed rates in Groton, and Groton looks like it's an area that's.
Well, and I, and I think too, I mean, yeah, the matching, the matching dollars may go away now, but that doesn't say that next year there's not other matching dollars or other potentials for us to, to fund this in different ways, that still gets that done.
So, we'll just park, forget it?
I would say park.
Yep. I would say for, for the, for the core plus, the, the additional spur options, I would park those for now.
Unless somebody in here.
I mean, there's, how many households on those additional, fifty-five households, something? If fifty-five people show up at this meeting and say. Yeah, two.
I, I'll go out to people if you want me, and find out which ones show up, and I don't know what's gonna be out of that.
I, I mean.
Only for that second meeting, you may have to.
No, I don't.
I think we need to be conservative and.
I, I agree.
Yeah, I think.
I agree, I, my point is, if I was on Rickor Mill Road, I'd feel differently.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Very differently, but they don't know about that, so.
Yeah. Dan's gonna.
It's cause I don't have internet.
Wouldn't it prove to just start the spurs and see how that, people will commit, set the law, and not know what we're doing?
Well, that's, that's just it, so. Yeah, that's what I was saying. I'd say, let's just stick with the initial.
All right, so forget about the other one.
Yes.
Focus on this, I'll come back with the next second page.
Okay. Unless it's negotiable, we can get it down to ten grand to run out that way, and then we would definitely reconsider.
You're trying to run out of business as well, too?
Yeah, but everybody negotiates with me.
I'm Peachum.
I'm just, just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think the initial deal is a really good deal, but I think we need to definitely get a little bit more specific information. Um, and I, you know, I would definitely say that, you know, as you're taking this back, Mike, we, I think we're all in agreement that we're willing to move forward with this proposal, but we definitely wanna make sure that we've got all of the, all of the loose ends tied up here.
Yeah, no, those are great suggestions, and they're actually maybe not for us, we're lying out. Or are you lying out, some of these other towns too, so.
Okay. So if we pull the trigger first, we get it first?
Absolutely, but we have timelines in our, you know, maybe our timelines, maybe.
It's hard to negotiate with them.
You're not negotiating.
Yeah, but you're the spokesperson, so you are who I'm negotiating.
He's just our representative.
Right. I know, but I, so you're here, so I gotta, you know, I gotta use what I can.
I'll figure out how to negotiate.
Yeah, that, that'd be good, yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, one more thing, we need to, um, there's a re-up for one here for our.
For you is the.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm interested in doing one more, this one for you, but I don't think anyone else wants to do it, but you seem to have all the knowledge.
We don't have an alternate, we can take a moment if anybody else wants to do one here. What's that?
Davis wasn't there often?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's, he's.
Okay.
He's mentioned a couple of times.
You, you know anybody, recommended? Gary, is that something you, one more hat you want, or?
Gary, I have a question.
Okay.
Look, for a call, I don't have a lot of time for this.
For the CUD?
I don't have any.
Okay.
Mike, do you have a suggestion? If you.
He said he had to think of it.
Let me talk to Larry.
Okay, okay. When do you need this, this done by?
Uh, I don't know, it's there before the May twenty eighth or something like that.
Okay.
So.
Yep, so, you know, if you want, um, if you wanna ask a couple people, so we have an alternate, that'd be, that'd be good, but, I mean, we, this is just easy enough, I can sign this.
All right, so why don't you give me a week to see if I can service an alternate?
Yeah, sure.
If you can't find one, let me know, I think I could probably talk Zach Conway into doing it.
Could be good to have one, I mean, other towns have to, I mean, it's, I can be something to maybe, you know.
Gary, walk here.
Okay. Thank you, all right, thanks.
Yes, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. All right, um, next up, infrastructure, uh, project.
I sent y'all the map on me.
Okay.
Forwarded what I did on the search, and he suggested, they were all on the same map, yeah, and so I did that.
Okay.
The suggestion's gonna end up being that we need these, and some people live on Mill Street, but we need Gavin to say that.
Yep.
So I, I forwarded it all to you, and all the search that I did is here, I highlighted the couple things they could read, um.
So basically, what it comes down to is we're probably gonna need adjustments for all these brownies.
That's what, that's what they.
Take some time.
So I sent it, I sent it to Gavin, I think he suggested, and I forwarded it to you guys.
Yep. And I'll, I can forward, I'll follow up with Gavin too, to follow, talk about what that means, and kinda next steps.
So in the same way, I saw from Nate, he said that we should have a contract, um, rise for our parks and about connecting the car station to the subject system, because if we're doing this whole drainage thing, it's better to just dig it up once, and not dig it up for this, like, interim, and then have it dug up again for the drainage. So I heard a letter saying what Nate told me, you guys can review it when you do your orders, or when you do an ad, or if you're doing.
We're gonna do this, and we're just gonna do it right, yeah, first time, I think we'll.
Yeah, just do it one time, says, pipes are always difficult to work around and compack.
Yeah, gotcha. And so I guess the revision would be that, you know, Robert Farerson would do that work, or would be just that he wouldn't do it at all?
Yeah, and what you did, they do everything throughout the day again, and we're ready to do.
The rest of the project.
Right, which, right, was things that they're gonna do, it's maybe possibly a few bids to do the project, and that would be one of them, and Rob could bid that.
Okay.
That sounds, yeah.
So the argument was.
That sounds right. What's that?
This, this, this project was out of it.
Correct, yes. The, 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 yeah, the, the infrastructure project, once we finalize the kinda, well, finalize the pieces that we've gotta finalize, and we're ready to actually, like, move forward, then, yeah, it would be, put out the bid like, like any other project, and. We'll probably, I mean, it's gonna probably end up being broken up into a couple projects, just because, you know, I think the complexity of it, so we'll do the down, downhill part first, and then the, the rest of it. But, you know, at least, it'll be, it'll follow our. so we'll do the down, downhill part first, and then the, the rest of it, but, you know, at least it'll be, it'll follow our, our procedures for, for bidding, yeah. So, alright, that, that it for what you heard from Nate?
Yeah, so I just gave him a letter, and that made, um, so we'll pay Robert for what he's done.
Yep. Gotcha.
That sounds good.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Um, highway, we got some bids for chloride. Seems early, it's not even dusty out there for.
Yeah? It's snowy out there.
Really?
A lot more some other places in here, and I was glad to see that. So, this is what you got?
Three bids.
Three bids.
Any preferred vendor, Harold?
Well, um, the two vendors that we've used for the last, uh, half years, we've been looking, uh, at pay price.
And you said it's per gallon?
Um, the tanks we have there now, one, one's each company. Um, if we go with the third one, most likely they'll pull the tanks, so.
So, how do you choose between the two that have done it? Previously, well, one's ninety-eight cents and one's ninety-seven, so we'd have.
Ninety-seven's the company.
This is the new company. So, we've got Gorman Group, which is ninety-eight cents a gallon, which we've used previously, and then Allstate Construction, which is ninety-eight gallons. What's, uh, what's the price per gallon applied mean?
Yeah, we, we apply ourselves, they can come around and have to be great and apply it on the road.
So, that, we wouldn't have to, they bid on that, so.
Yeah, that's.
We don't need to.
Cause it was on the sheet.
Yeah.
And then there's a three hundred gal, three thousand gallon storage tray and tractor and trim. So, equipment to be utilized, okay. So, who do you recommend? How do you decide?
Who'd we lose?
Gorman's out of New York, but is, where is, Alls, Alls?
Sudnerland, Mass, this is Glenmont, New York.
So, they're all out of state, they don't even have anybody in state that does it.
Well, the guy from Gorman lives in Park.
Who did we lose, use last year?
Uh, Gorman.
So, we should use Allstate?
Allstate, yeah.
I don't know, what it.
That's, that's what we've done the best.
It's not really my department, so, that's your department, and whatever.
Allstate and Gorman have been good since I've been here. Um, we've, we use the switch every year, no matter what the price was. Last year, every year that they've done it, that I've done it for three years I've been here.
They've been the same.
The person that isn't gonna get bid that year gives a ridiculous low price.
Next year?
This is ridiculous, cause you know you're not gonna get it, so you just throw a low down. So, last year I told them, I said, this is it, a low, low bid, and they said the same price.
So, um, how many gallons is this for? Cause that's.
I was, was it six thousand gallons, I think, this is what we. Uh, obviously, it's gonna be less this year, we do, you know, money, we, there's always so much money, but.
Yeah. But, my opinion is, you use who you wanna use, that's your department, so.
Yep.
I don't work with these guys, you make, it's your decision, you're the, you're the road, road agent, so, you, you make the call.
Well, you ever seen how they did it last year with Allstate this year?
Sounds fair to me.
Okay, what's your, what's your budget for that?
I don't know.
Okay. So, you wanna use?
Allstate.
Allstate.
Make a motion to approve the bid from Allstate for the sum of ninety-eight cents per gallon delivered.
A second, alright, any other discussion? Mariana?
Okay.
All, all those, uh, uh, in favor of using Allstate Construction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, alright. What else you got for us?
I guess the culvert price. Glad you guys sent that.
Do we need culverts? You should have pre-bought them for like, for a while.
Third of the price.
So, how many do we need, and how much do we have to pay?
Well, basically, we can get what we can get for what we have in the budget.
Okay. Do we only buy those one places, or these are three different places?
Three different places.
Are these the, are these the, um, the, the recycled ones? Are these, cause you can, so, why don't we, so, that being said, they make two different plastic culverts, and this is plastic or steel, let's see?
Well, it's both.
Okay.
Prices for both.
So, what?
I'm warning, like, prices for metal, cause you can't get plastic, you didn't need, I'm gonna give you a price.
Oh, okay.
Um, there's one, it's just an email.
Thirty-six per foot, Jesus Christ.
Yeah, basically, you just look at the price, you sell all the factors, basically, admit enough change to a culvert, that's it.
Well, it is what, it is what it is, and hopefully, in the future, they'll go down and whatever, but we'll have to, we'll have to address that when it comes, everything's gonna be up, so it's, pretty much, that's the deal.
How many culverts do you think you need?
Well, I know I need some line of water, which is a grant, so it'll get repaid, for the most part.
Okay. I just wanted to, what size that's?
It's being across the road, and it's gonna be across right for this.
Maybe we should only put in like half culverts or something, we could save money.
Yeah, so I'll put your phone number on the list, you know, whether you're gonna go from this to this.
You're saying, I know, but, that's, that's what we gotta do, we gotta do, so. It's your, it's your, it's your deal, if you can save us money, that's, that's, that's great. If you can save money on these culverts and find somewhere else, it's cheaper, we can pay, we can pay.
Yeah, it's, I mean, they're all, I mean, there is one, cheapest one in there is for this.
Yeah, for twenty-one hundred for the, what you laid out that you needed.
Yeah, that's just one of these things, is basically what we do.
What is that compared to the last year, I mean, obviously, it's.
Almost tripled.
Almost tripled, yeah.
I'm, I think we can get used to, you're, we're gonna be getting used to this, cause this is kinda the way things have dealt everywhere, dealt with tripled and stuff, so, we gotta take that into consideration, and everything, who is the town and, I mean.
Our own homesteads, makes sense, Justin, you're making twice what you were last year, right?
Yeah.
Triple.
Triple, yeah.
Yeah.
And we're getting in double the taxes we did this year, than we did last year?
Yep. So, uh, I mean, and what, what did we budget, what did you budget for that?
I think it's forty-five hundred bucks.
Forty-five hundred for culverts?
Yeah.
So.
Well, here's my suggestion, we'll do what we can do with what we have, if we have to do more, then we'll have to, get, take it.
Um, I do have some on hand, so we're not totally just relying on this, but I also wanna spend the budget so that, you know, next year they can go a bit more.
Hopefully, they'll go down, but yes, absolutely, you know, I know, I get it. Something's gotta happen, we can't keep going like this, so.
So, uh, I mean, I'd, I'd say, you know.
Do what you gotta do.
Do what you gotta do, yeah. Yep.
You need us to make a motion on one of these vendors, Harold, or?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay.
We have to make a motion, it's okay to buy some culverts.
Cause you put it out to bid.
Yeah.
So, they submitted bids, so that's why.
Do we put it out to one?
What's that?
These are all bids, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're all quotations, so. So, uh, I mean, I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, use Ferguson Water Works for purchase of culverts.
Second.
Do you want it for twenty-twenty-two, or do you just want it for this current?
Twenty-two.
Okay.
I mean, it's over at five hundred bucks, I got great, we have to.
Yeah. Alright, so, there you go, for twenty-twenty-two.
Okay. A second, or whatever we do.
Alright, there's a second, yep, that was a motion. Alright, any other discussion on that? Hopefully, prices come down eventually. All those, uh, in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Alright. That's that, anything else?
Yeah, it's for, on Spring Road project, box full.
Alright. I don't know, is it? What's that? Kinda scared looking, let's see.
Just two, huh?
Just, yeah, just two, it's like, this one is for Daryl Matthews, um, from Water Purge, Vermont. Two hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
That's cheap. Alliance, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred.
Wow.
Out of Danville, so I would say.
Is this?
Matthews.
Is this, we've got grant money for this project?
I've got a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant.
So, we're gonna make up the difference, basically?
If you're gonna apply for a grant, try to do more.
Yeah.
And where, where, where are you?
Sign up for all the grants we can get.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Um, where, so, you said a hundred and seventy-five thousand, right? So, that means.
What are we at, two fifty, something, two fifty-eight?
Two, two ninety-eight is the lower one, so we gotta make up a hundred and twenty, roughly a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
So, in my infrastructure, with this year's payment, with this year's money going in, I got about a hundred and three thousand in my infrastructure.
So, you're gonna be short about seventeen grand.
Can we, can you take that from somewhere else in your budget?
I don't know where.
Seventeen thousand dollars, yeah.
I, I don't know, I'm just thinking, could do waves, help or something.
Savings, we just talked about, what's CUD?
Oh!
Yeah, I mean. That puts us in a, kind of a bind, so that's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, plus a hundred and three thousand dollars is two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, and the lowest bid's two hundred and ninety-five, roughly, two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars.
Do we have an idea, did we have an idea of where it might be at one point compared to what it is? Like, last year, or the year before, where we would be at for some?
So, next year, you're gonna invest it.
Yeah.
That's why I went on, to get the grant.
Okay.
Um, I don't have that, but it may last a while.
Yeah, see, that's what I was afraid of.
Because, plus twenty percent of a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Can we get it, we don't know if we can get any more grant money or anymore.
I haven't, actually, I haven't, you're trying to call.
Let's check, let's, yeah.
I think we should table it.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't have any more bids, but.
Yep, yep. Yeah, I will, I will agree, I think tabling this until we get a little bit more information about what possible grant funding can help cover that gap, cause that's, that's a pretty significant gap to try to cover.
Can we wait, how, what's the road, like, what, I mean, what's the prognosis on the?
The grant we have goes the next year, yeah, next year.
Twenty-twenty-three.
So, we could do it next year, if we put it off one year, would it save us anything, we don't know.
Would it go up?
Yeah.
Alright.
Another chance.
But I think if, if we waited, we would have to, obviously, we'd have to put it back out to bid.
Correct.
In a year, if we did that.
Let's get some more information and see if we can either come up with some more funding, or some more suggestions, or something, and then go from there, how's that?
So.
Okay.
Uh, we, you know, again, we'll accept these bids, I think you're right, and we'll table it for next meeting, and.
So, what was the lowest, twenty-five?
Two ninety-five, I'll let you see these, but, yeah, Daryl Matthews, uh, is, uh, I guess it's Daryl Matthews excavating.
Yeah, I know, dude.
Um, is two hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven, and Alliance Consulting and Excavation is three hundred and fifty-six, five hundred.
So, what's that, almost seventy-five thousand more, something like that?
Fit, yeah, fifty, fifty-five, oh, yeah, sixty thousand dollars more.
Sixty thousand more.
Yep. So.
Yeah, I'd say we table it for next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Harold.
Anything else, Harold?
I think that's it.
Are you sure?
Yes, sure.
Okay. Uh, town treasurer, Lisa?
So, I told him, Zach, I think I talked to Tris, and he said that, um, they do grant U S D A, they're coming on May eleventh.
May eleventh, okay.
And it starts at nine, and I asked him if he'd be all day, and see if it would help you with your schedule, and he hasn't responded, so, I think it's all day.
Okay, if, if not, that's fine, I can adjust my schedule, but.
May, coming.
Yeah, and nine o'clock for some.
Nine, yeah. So, it's good that, um, everybody can be there. Um, and Erin, I wondered if you would set up the State of Vermont closeout agreement?
No, that's for, uh, Cassie Bell, uh, Cassie Bell, I have not.
Okay, cause you need to do that, and then it's a week for her to do what she needs to do.
Yep.
And we're expired.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, I know that.
And, and then, and then Erin, if you signed up for the ARCA portal.
Yep.
That, we, we sent an email, we'll coordinate a time to.
And hopefully, I, I imagine it'll be, if it works for you guys, like, one o'clock on the day, to come in and do that.
Okay.
Unless it takes me more time than that.
Just, I had a bear new, but I was on, and today he had told me to do it differently, and now they're, now they're finding out it's easier to do it this other way, so we're hoping that it's.
Hoping that, yes, yeah. Um, my plan too is to set up, because you did like Real ID, or ID meet, or something.
Yeah.
And the other one.
Doesn't need that.
Yeah, so I was gonna try to get that done this weekend, so I'll have that, and then when they want that information through the portal, I'll already have that.
Yeah, you have to have an email, that you will get to separate, separately.
Yeah, for the.
So, by next meeting, you'll have everything done, you said?
No, no, I have to buy a seat.
You have that for you.
Well, yeah, I'm gonna save this.
All the party money, whatever.
Yeah, we need that, yeah, yeah, we need that, our.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do, yeah.
Okay.
It's true.
Alright, so I moved the insurance on the cruiser, like you guys discussed, and I explained the situation, and they have worked on that. Also, Calhoun County Sheriff's Dispatch Service paid two hundred and fifty dollars a month on that, so I called them and asked if they could pause it, until decisions are made on.
Yep.
Um, cruise, cruiser, we don't have one, so.
Um, does that, what is, what are those dispatch fees go?
Two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, what, what is it, I mean, it's used for dispatching, but is that specifically for?
It's also, so she just reminded me, since we're pausing it, you can't do bid checks and you can't do plate runs, if we're pausing it, so.
And that's for Jim and those.
I see, okay. So, you said, Lisa, that I can't go in there now?
That's what, if we, if we pause it, that's what I, that's what he said.
We, yeah, we have to pause it, yeah, I guess we gotta decide on that, cause, yeah.
Okay.
That's two hundred and fifty dollars, you know, we paid in March, and then in April, and no.
Right.
Work.
Yeah, that's, uh, I mean, I would, that's all Jim could do right now, pretty much, he can't patrol.
We actually, on foot?
Yeah, no patrols, Jim could do foot patrol.
Johnny, you are a peddler. We'll get you a wagon.
But people can call him up to do a bid check still, and you get those fairly frequently anyways, right, Jim?
Yeah, I just don't screw them today.
Yeah, so. So, yeah, then I, I mean, if we're, if, if that's stuff that we're still doing, that is, um, part of, um, your responsibilities, that don't require a, a cruiser, then I would say we should keep that service in place.
Okay.
Yeah, two, two bid checks and one, ran one plate for back there, so it was over the middle long ago, on front of property, that's closed, closed this week.
Okay. Well, I guess the discussion would be, Jim was telling us at the last meeting that he was gonna resign and not do his job if we didn't get a cruiser right away, right?
Yep.
So, if we're not gonna get a cruiser. So, if we're not gonna get a cruiser right away, and we can't do that, and then Jim's gonna resign or whatever, you know what I mean, so we got, I guess it all comes together, right? So, we need to.
It, it comes down to, you know, does Jim wanna continue to be the constable for the town of Groton?
And, um, we're not gonna be able to get a cruiser in the next week or two or a month?
Yeah, it's gonna be, you know.
We haven't even warned, we'll have to come up with a plan and warn it, and to get a cruiser.
Yep.
So, you haven't come up with anything yet for a cruiser?
Well, Jim, like, like we said at the last meeting, I mean, we, we have to warn to spend that money, no matter what it comes down to, we've gotta warn a, um, we've gotta warn an article for town meeting to, to make that happen, and, um, at this point, we're gonna put it on, I think, with, with the, the budget as a separate, uh, article.
No, we've already, we can't.
What's that?
We've already made a motion to do the budget as the budget, but we're not.
Yeah, no, we, we had talked about that at the last meeting, was having a separate article on that, with the warning, which we're, we needed to go over.
But we're already putting the warning out, so we would have to discuss and come up with a plan in order to do that, and we didn't.
Correct, well, no, I thought we did at the last meeting, so I think, is it not on there?
It's not on there.
So.
But we'll wanna put it on there.
I, I, I thought, I, my assumption from the last meeting was that that was what we were doing, was putting that as a separate article on the vote.
How could we put on, how could we put anything on there, we don't have any information. We just threw some numbers around real quick at the last meeting, and then, but we haven't really come up with a plan and discussed anything to move forward with the cruiser or anything.
And if you found a car, I wasn't sure that we could get that, and then.
Yeah, we need.
My impression is the article would read something along the lines of, shall the town of Groton approve the purchase of a cruiser for the constable coming from the general of the fund balance not to exceed fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Because we're not gonna have, we're not, we can't have H O Taylor get a car and hold it for us for a month and a half while we wait.
Yeah.
So, you have to pick.
Extremely challenging for us to say that we're gonna spend a specific amount of money for a specific vehicle, and we have to warn that for thirty days, and then we have to wait, what, forty-five days after that? So, you know, we're already talking about, if, if, if we do, i- if we set it as a separate special town meeting, and we vote on it that way, and we have everybody come in and talk about it then, or we add it as a separate article on the warning with the budget article, which is what we talked about at the last meeting, it's still, either way, we're talking about end of May, beginning of June, before any of that happens.
Right, and I, I honestly, as a taxpayer and a selectman, I feel like we're gonna ask for another fifty thousand dollars?
Nope.
When we just cut the budget, like twenty-two thousand.
You know, because it's coming out of the fund balance.
Yeah, it's coming out of the fund balance, it wouldn't.
But, I mean, you know.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I absolutely get what you're saying.
We're talking about wages and everything else, and then.
That's why it's coming out of the fund balance.
You gotta buy a new car.
Because it's already money the town's already raised.
Yeah, well, I think the, as we said, as, as we've said a couple of times, I mean, we, the, the, and I know the information and, and circumstances were different in March, but, you know, we did vote to have a, a law enforcement.
So, I had this for you guys to look at, and no one came in, so.
I did.
Except for Tris.
Okay. Well, no, I, I agree.
That's what I kinda was thinking, we're trying to deal with one, one thing here at a time.
Yep.
And then we're gonna move on, I'm honestly not for buying a new cruiser, so, originally, when this proposal was, it was a five thousand dollar cruiser that we were gonna get, and then you asked the town, hey, do you want Jim to be the constable, the town's like, yeah, sure, whatever, and now we're talking a fifty thousand dollar cruiser, and it's a whole different, the whole different ballgame, as far as I'm concerned.
I don't wanna save you all the problem. Because a little like a, a boss from Groton's like, boy, like then the resignation effective right now was town constable.
Okay. Well, thank you for your service, Jim.
Just wanted you to shut the hell up.
I would disagree with Jim, but I, I do agree, it's not, you know, fifty thousand dollars is, especially now with what we've got going on, is not necessarily an expense. But I, I think what it comes down to is, based off the article, I mean, that we voted, that everybody voted on, you know, do we actually have a separate article to vote on that or not at this point, but, I guess if.
I have a recommendation.
Yeah, a separate article could be added, and we just wanted to take, you guys have to sign in the morning, which is a very big deal, but I take the whole extra forty-five days of wasting the money. On top of thirty days of the warrant, is what would make them possibly do the same thing they just did, because not being able to spend the money until they have forty-five days.
Yeah, but it's, like we said at the last meeting, it's the soonest we can get it.
Correct.
I think Jim understands that, but we can't get it, we can't make it go any faster.
I kinda feel like we're being like bold, you know, pushed into, well, this is what's happening, or I'm not gonna do this, or whatever, and I don't feel that's very fair to the board, you know, trying to come up with that, we're trying to deal with a budget right now.
Now, you're supposed to try to sell cars.
And the car, and none of that, come back to have money to vote for this purchase, and.
My. So, I have a suggestion, I propose that we could hire the sheriff's department, um, for a little while, and try that out.
I, I, I think at this point, um, you know.
And see if we need them.
Jim, Jim, I guess, has officially resigned.
Yes.
As the constable, and I think that means that, that puts us in a position where we need to contact the sheriff's department, talk about contracted services, so.
And honestly, I think we need to do, we're working on a study as it is now.
Correct.
Dan and, um.
And Deb.
Deb are working on that, and I kinda feel like, let's, let's hire the sheriff's department for a little while, for, let's say, ten thousand dollars, for, how, w- w- what will we, how much is it?
I, I have it all right, I'll, I can give you.
Does that go back to the voters, because?
No.
No.
The voters had to know whether for them to have, they did that at the urgency, select, select.
Select, what we have, so, so, so let me, let me clarify, so, what we voted, what we decided as part of the article for putting a vote to the, the voters of Groton to, um, how did we phrase it, I think it was to, uh, not authorize the constable to be a law enforcement officer. Um, the select board has the decision, has the ability to make that specific decision. Um, that being said, we felt, I think, Aaron, you correct me if I'm wrong, but we felt that that was something that should go to the voters. So, the select board, in essence, took what we could have decided on and wanted the, the town to vote on to, to understand that.
Do we have a town that can have a constable for certain duties?
That is correct.
No, we, I don't, I think we do not have to.
For.
We do not have to.
So. So, yeah, so, starting July first, today is April, what, the twenty-first, so. Right, c- correct.
So, we're gonna do some research on this, is what we're.
I'm texting, we have to have a constable for things like collections and different that.
For, tech, there's some things, hold on.
We have to have a constable, they can appoint anybody, it could be Harold, it could be Gary, it could be me.
Right, that's the constable that will, you know, we pick up a visit here, take a number of persons out of town meeting, do a couple of limited things, can't do any law enforcement, can't do bin check. That can be anybody, a registered voter for town, we have to have that.
Okay.
We do not have to have a law enforcement person.
Correct.
That's why we're trying, the select board can contract at any time they want with the sheriff's department to do patrol.
And, and so, the other thing too is, I mean, we, when we researched this previously, what the, what we got in the budget, when we approved for the constable budget for the year, is actually more than what it would be for, and now especially, it's gonna be less, because it's not, it's not the full year, it will be less than the budgeted amount of the, the constable budget, so in essence.
The contract is, you can set that in the amount, that you can have a lot of law enforcement, and that's the sheriff's contract, because you have to do patrol, whether that's two hours or eight hours.
Later sometime.
Good.
We got a couple.
Oh, I guess probably. That is good, on the back of the meeting, that looks, I don't know.
Oh, no, that, so that. There, that goes, that's the constable layout, so. Yep, well, and I, and I think, I'll have to look back through my notes, so, wh- what I would suggest, so, just to keep things rolling here is, uh, for the next meeting, I'm gonna talk with the sheriff's department, um, about the contract, I'll get my notes from previously when we were looking at that, what that cost looks like, so we can kinda do the cost comparison to show.
Dan and Deborah might have something by then too.
Correct, and, and I know.
Cause they're working on that.
Yeah, I know that, uh, um, what's his name, Whipple, Dan Whipple.
Trevor.
Trevor Whipple, um, I think, um.
We need to stop, take a look, it's, it's, we haven't had a constable working.
And it's obvious, when you sit down.
Um, you know what I mean, we, we haven't had one with a car for now.
How long now? Two and a half months, almost.
So.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there things that you should launch that, that you should have to have a constable, because they're back to the, the past.
Correct, I think that's.
So, so the town of Newberry, one of the bigger towns, what, what do they, what do they, they, wh- wh- what do they do? They don't have them, they don't have them.
A lot of driving, training, they're looking for a town to be the, this is appointed person on the town, so, a lot of towns don't have contractors.
So, why most towns don't have constables with the best balance at this point?
Right, correct.
And that's why the guilty no committee was passed.
Yep.
It's setting you like first, you can afford what you want, if you're certain one of the constable, you can do other things.
Well, so. Right, okay, which is, I, actually, when I handed you that, I had this, so, I, I've got all of that from, from Vermont statutes online, so, um, I mean, i- i- in essence, I think, the other thing I'll, I'll, I'll say is for, you know, most of the major crime that happens in town, major being, you know, felony level or, or above criminal activity, is handled through state police, um, and or the sheriff's department anyway, um, based off of who responds quicker as it is, but, uh, I think in general, I think we definitely all agree that, and I, you know, being somebody that lives right here on three oh two in the, in, you know, the greater village area, is we need somebody to help with speed debatement especially, so, you know, it's unfortunate that Jim doesn't wanna be, um, the consul anymore, and I can understand where his frustrations are, but the process is the process, so.
So, that all being said, should we, excuse me, excuse me, we're having a select.
Hold on a second, hold on.
So, that all being said, should we suspend, um, our two hundred and fifty dollar thing?
That's.
The other thing? The other thing, should we do a letter or something for Jim for, um, for thanking him for his years?
Correct, I, I think we're gonna need something formal and writing from them anyway for it, and then we'll have to accept that formally at the meeting, but for, for his resignation, if that's truly what, what he'll do, and I.
I would, I guess I would hold off, Lisa, until, just make sure Cooler heads, he doesn't calm down and decide otherwise, you know, hold off till middle of next week or sometime.
Um, Aaron, do you feel comfortable giving him a?
I'll reach out to Jim.
Reach out to him, talk to him, I think that would be prudent.
Yep.
So.
Yes, ma'am.
Because if they can afford it, if they're willing to, um, keep Jim on as a county, county constable, um, then it was the town's obligation to provide a truck cruiser. Now that he's resigned, that I'm acting against the town's obligation, but what does the town have to do to make that known to the voters at this point?
I, I think it's, uh, we're gonna try to document some of this in the minutes, I guess, um.
Yeah.
I think the, the, the big thing is, you know, Jim, you know, obviously exited this meeting and, and said that he was resigning, so I think first, we're gonna confirm that that's truly what he desires to do, um, I think with that, that then means that, from, I think procedurally, that means next steps would be, um, that we have to, um, appoint, you know, a temporary constable, the select board needs to appoint a temporary constable until we are able to elect a new constable. Um, that's what I, I think is the. Correct, uh, well, but it, we, you know, we, uh, the, the town voted for him as an elected position, so we would have to change that, correct?
You know, this is all like really, because not, it's all kind of a messy mess, because, yeah, the town.
But, you know, ba- basically, no matter what, we're gonna have to appoint a, a, a constable until we elect a constable, um, if that's what we choose to do. Um, and then from a law enforcement perspective, we will have to make the decision, um, as to whether we want to, um, have a constable that provides law enforcement or not, um, and then kinda move forward from there, so, yes, ma'am.
So, I know my own job has expressed interest in, for a constable, if Jim decides to not come on next year, if it is in fact, you know, there are costs to Jim, and Jim says, we're not allowed to be done. Would it be worth it to him to have, if he's interested in just doing, not necessarily with the law enforcement part of it, but, do you need a person that can pass?
Sure.
I, I think if, yeah, I think if he's in a, yeah, if he's a registered voter in the town of, of Groton, I think that makes sense.
And the only other person in the town of Groton to express interest in the job? I think it makes sense.
And he's also working at Grattan County right now, for Grattan County direction right now.
Correct.
It is, uh, supposed to be a, you know, in law enforcement, right?
And I.
I didn't have that direction anyways, because he's somebody, he's, he's young, he's interested in being part of his town, and.
Yep.
I just think he's expressed interest.
Sure, I, I, I think that, that, you know, that makes sense, for sure, and I think, you know, again, it come, it, some of it then comes down to, you know, what are we doing in the meantime, so, in order to be a law enforcement officer, you have to go through the academy, there's a lot of steps that, that go into that, I think that's part of what we're. Correct, correct, exactly. Agreed, yeah, agreed, and I, and I think then, you know, as we hear from Trevor Whipple and, and Dan and Deb on what feasibility looks like, and we can kinda update everybody on what that means, what that, you know, ongoing cost is, cost liability, et cetera, is for the town, then we can kinda make an informed decision on, you know, whether we have an actual, um, constable, yeah, a need for a constable who has the authority to conduct law enforcement activities, so that, that's.
I think the next thing we just put one of those questions, speed limits, and if you get above thirty miles an hour, then you take your car.
If I got time, I'll get back to that, cuz I, I started that process to get speed limits changed that, west of the village. Um, and I think the study that we've got is probably still valid, so it's, it's gonna have to go to the state transportation committee, but it's doable, so, and that helps to a certain extent, but.
You're right, you just know what's involved, I mean, Jim's sitting in town at his club in the morning, he has his car for the evening, he just knows the whole theaters, just.
Even all day.
People, yeah, I think people are starting to realize that.
But, 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 which is fine, I get that and understand, but I'm also, the hazards, we, is really what we need to be covering, school bus times, if you're really gonna do, is there people out on the streets, you know, so on and stuff like that, not the guy going to work at five or six o'clock in the morning, and he's late.
I work down there in the garage, a lot of the winters, with the door open, so I can see, hear cars going by, the vehicles that aren't even close to me legally, I mean, the sound, I mean, some of them, no exhaust whatsoever.
Right.
Speed, I mean, I can look down and see the stoplights.
You know, it sounds like we have a new constable. Double duty.
No, no, I, I think, uh.
And he can use one of the town trucks.
Okay, go. So. So, I, I wanna, I wanna try to get the meeting back on track, so we can get that, so, so, uh, so, back to, back, back to Lisa, so, I would say, at this point, um, let's give it to the next meeting to make a decision on whether we suspend that, till we get the official.
It was next week.
He's following up with, with Jim for next week.
Yeah, we're paying, we're paying through April anyways, right?
We're paid till May, right? Or we're not? I thought it was per month, we need to pay this month?
So, we're good, and so basically.
So, we're paid to May.
Yeah, we're paid till May, so, so, I mean, I, I think the thing is, we need, in the next week, in the next week, we need to find out what, what finalized Jim's intentions, and at the next meeting, we need to, you know. Perfect, and then we'll make a decision in May fifth that we'll get rid of that, so. so...
Okay, and the only other thing I'd say was, um, the general rates and plans that are moving in July are, there's no rate changes.
That has been in like the last three years.
Yeah, I think we actually got it, thank you, that's it.
All right, great, thank you. All right, Carrie.
This is the warning and...
Oh, the one we were looking for.
Two warnings, yeah, two warnings, there you go.
I didn't wanna miss it, so I told you.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Lisa said she gave it to us, we were looking everywhere for it.
That's the, which we can talk about to local, I've seen...
Oh, yeah, that I, yeah, okay, okay, it's thirty-eight pages, right?
Yeah.
That's the L E M P, I, I checked my paperwork, I do have the ICS one hundred, so...
You took it today?
No, I printed, I was gonna do it, so, so I don't have to, if he's already, you've already, you're already done?
I'll just have to take your name off.
If he wants to do, you got him in there, he can do it if he wants to.
Oh, you already have the tree.
You already did it, right?
I know, yeah, be happy to, but...
Okay, we'll change name, it, it, that's fine.
So, uh, oh, that's the information.
This is the informational meeting next. I'm supposed to be in next week anyways.
So, uh...
No, 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 not supposed to be, you're going to be, not supposed to be.
Monday at one o'clock, that's what I heard.
Yeah, Monday at one o'clock, he said.
Yeah, um, so we, we have the...
We can all be, I can be there too if you want.
Yep, we can, we got the warning here for...
Oh, then we'd have a meeting, we can't all be there, never mind.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, so the, um, warning for the special town meeting, um, with the article for the budget, um, and the informational meeting, so the informational meeting will be...
The day before, right?
Two days before, yep, May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, at six P M.
So, I'm sorry, is there any voting?
Uh, I'm getting there, so, the, the informational meeting is on May twenty, Monday, May twenty-third, the, um, special town meeting for voting will be Wednesday, May twenty-fifth, from ten A M. to seven P M. Right here, on a ballot.
Could you vote in? So, right now?
Yep, it'll be just as it was voted on in, in, in March, yep.
The emergency plan, I read it, um, right from the A to B, just, you know, the council was too well set, and that's, see, by day, switch the parents' names, sort of, sign that, and send it next week, or the...
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna be there Monday at one o'clock, I'm leaving, but I would be.
Well, then, this, the other thing I needed out, this lady called from N V D A today, it's funny, because I just emailed N V D A about the hazard mitigation plan that never got finished, right before COVID hit, and I emailed everyone, so I was, you were the person that, uh, changed jobs, so nobody was taking care of it, and I emailed her, I haven't heard back, in the meantime, this other lady called about something I may do, the river corridor protection, that the town, uh, do, like, do a plan, and, and, we have that, so right now, since there's a bigger event, a FEMA event, um, we get seven point five percent of the cost reduced away, if we get the hazard mitigation plan finished, we would get twelve point five.
On top of the seventy-five?
On top of twelve point five, seven point five, twelve point five.
Oh, seven point five?
Sorry.
To twelve point five K?
And then, if we also add this river one, it goes to seventeen point five.
What about the seventy-five?
There's the seventy-five.
Okay, so seventeen...
So, this is just, I called her, we had a meeting tonight, she was, she emailed me this presentation they just ran from town to day, for a little chat, and it would be that type of deal, and then she also recommended us that she can, uh, while I got on board this case too, we're, go through the whole process of developing the plan, put it forward, and, and...
So, so in essence, if we put all of this in place, we'll reduce the cost, local cost, to seven point five percent of the event.
What if we're seventeen point five from the state?
Correct, yeah, no, I'm, I'm just on the, yeah, so that seventeen point five percent from the state reduces what we would be responsible for funding to seven point five percent locally.
Okay, so we wanna get what we can.
So what, what do we need to do for next steps?
So, uh, more of this to you guys, and I think the plan commission, and then there would be something that's worked on, like the local emergency plan, like the hazard mitigation plan, and we set, apply all of that.
Isn't that, that twelve point five percent, we already fall for that, have we?
No, but that hasn't been a gate...
That hasn't been a gate, okay, 'cause I was gonna say, the standard, the bridge standards, the national flood, the local emergency, we do those three, but the mitigation...
Which Brent used to work on these things, so we can have Harold work on these things?
No, Brent's the emergency manager.
Right, right.
So, so what we need to do is, we need to get back to the hazardous mitigation plan.
Which that's why I emailed today, how's it going with N V D A, so...
Is Brent still involved in any of this stuff?
Yeah.
And, and he's the N V D A representative as well, and the emergency manager, so Brent can help work on some of this, still.
Okay, good.
Yep, um, and then, local emergency operations plan, and then the river corridor protection plan, is that the, that additional one that you're talking about?
Yes, this one, I think, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to...
So, I mean, it sounds, it sounds like if we're able to do some of this, we, it, it will benefit the town, for sure, so...
Yeah, 'cause we definitely like seventeen percent versus seven.
I don't know if I can, I don't know if I can...
Okay.
For COVID.
Is, uh, how, how challenging do you think it will be to put up?
Depends on what they change.
Okay.
She said she can come in and bring up, have a condensed presentation, because I'm the one who's handling the, she's still...
Okay.
She was actually scheduled to meet...
How's it going?
About, she was actually scheduled to meet...
Yeah, uh, yeah, no, I mean, I, I think, I think for that, I mean, it's kinda up to, up to Aaron and, Aaron and Tr- uh, Tristan, but, um, you know, I'm wondering if we'd plan like a, you know, just a special select board meeting to do this separate from everything else.
I would, yeah, I mean, my, just 'cause this is, this is pretty in-depth, my inclination would be to have her present something to the planning commission.
Planning commission?
Yeah.
That sounds, that sounds good.
And then, I think, I think, well, I'm ninety-nine per- yes, that's, that's gonna say, I'm ninety-nine percent sure the select board can go there, do the planning commission meeting, so...
At least Aaron.
It's a, it's a warned meeting, so, yeah, it should, it follows open meeting laws anyway, so...
But then I think you could get a lot more in-depth into it in a planning commission than you could.
So, uh, yeah, I, I would say then, let's, let's do that, the next planning commission meeting, let's talk about getting her scheduled to come, to talk about that, and we can start working on that.
Of course, it's up to the planning commission.
Yeah, I'll...
Yeah.
I'll see if we can get that to...
Yep.
Okay, if we go, come to a meeting, and, and, the plan...
Okay, okay, good, thanks.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Dorothy, Assistant Assessor?
Um, so, I wrote this statement about the current use of, um, our, our social terms are district divided, um, they're gonna go random, um, you know, with random, fifteen random parcels, they're currently in current use, and review them, so that the one day they should come and review those in the office, and go over the records with us, and then should come another day, and do a visual inspection from the road of fifteen persons, and then compare it, so not only looking at the fifteen persons, but then comparables to those fifteen persons, so it'll be some that are, have two acres excluded, some that have buildings, buildings involved, some that are risk, regular persons, so, there's a lot involved, um, and she's got a timeline of a minute and a minute, which I, I was thinking was gonna work me the hard time on, because we're trying to get everything done to have, do the abstract on I G S four, so, I think we may be looking at something later than that, I haven't negotiated that yet, so...
Okay.
But it's been a while, a couple, at least a couple of days, um, for me at least, and maybe John also, I'm not sure if we have that power, it's, uh, man, it's required by the state, and they randomly choose eight towns every year, so...
Correct.
We don't really...
We get to be the lucky one, huh?
Yeah, you're lucky, I don't know if we've ever had that before.
Oh, okay.
So, at, when all of that's done, are they going to, I guess, submit a report back to us on how that audit goes?
It's available to, how we, how we, um, the town and the assessors have valued the property, compare it to other persons that are just like it that are in current use, and then make a recommendation, and I don't know at that point if they can then change, I think they may be able at that point to change the appraisal, if they think that we haven't done our job, um, and I haven't talked with John about this yet, but, so what we're looking at is, we have like sixty-four persons in current use, John and I have probably looked at maybe six or eight or ten of those in the last three years, so all of this is, then done, all right, so we don't know, I mean, I, I thought we need to go through and review them, but it's not a case of going through and reviewing them because it's what's there now.
Yeah.
So, if there's been, I don't know the history of all the persons, and I don't know how they were valued, but that would be interesting, we're gonna have to see what that would be.
Okay.
Because we review them every year, and update them every year, so we don't go back and change them every year.
Well, this'll be a good learning thing, then to figure out...
Especially, it's gonna be a huge learning experience, but just stand by, we're ready to change this.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
It is what it is.
Good, well, thanks Dorothy, and thanks for staying on top of that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Well, I didn't really start it this, because I have no idea, it's not in any of it current use information, and I have a book this day, but there's nothing in there about this office.
Okay.
You can write it back.
Okay, good, um, thank you. Thanks Dorothy, uh, firing fast, Aaron, have anything, anything, Brenda?
Nope, I don't think so.
Okay, very good, uh, first consul, I think we've covered that pretty good tonight.
Yeah.
Uh, library, I didn't hear anything in addition...
Yeah, there is, like, there's nothing.
Okay, yep, uh, zoning.
Uh, a couple things, um, first of all, I want to thank the select board for passing the very good records, and saying that some of our problems, and people for the help on that, uh, taking special care of Lisa, um, we had a situation where a person called me, asked me if I was a zoning administrator, and told me they were going to sue, told me literally for it, um, and we got the information, we told them to sign off on it, Aaron had signed off on it, was able to talk with Charlie, given the correct information, and everything turned around, so, kudos to you, you've been on top of that, uh, Carrie, I worked on the, um, zoning project, and we decided we're gonna do two separate projects, a lot of towns doing the one, uh, with, with the subdivision included, we're gonna go two, so there's no confusion, and also, we're gonna present it to the, to the management in the main meeting about prices going back on permits, because right now, we're not receiving that money in court, so...
Last time, Trent put up on any of those, any questions?
Well, we haven't gone on it forever, and mostly times, we're having this, Carrie, I think, that we really jumped a lot, uh, we were jumping to fifty dollars for the court fees, uh, that's about it, um, some, kind of, that's picking up.
Good, thank you, thanks, Dave, health officer, I don't have anything there, do you have anything?
No, not at all.
Okay, uh, meetings?
Um, the only thing that I had to add was, um, Garrett from Aiken Plumbing came to look at that, do that faucet, right, we talked about last meeting, and it's really not an option now, what he looked at, he thought he could drill over to that side, and what it was, is the vault that he was drilling into, and not the cement of the foundation. Long story short, it's not gonna work without spending days of doing the work, and I did talk to Brother Gary, who knows his building well, and he said he'd take a look, but...
So, uh, just to confirm, uh, in the listener's office, there's a lot, looks like a slot in the corner.
Yeah, right.
So, he went in there, and that wall, it's kinda like right here, he, on top of that foundation, moved it up, and then, so, there would be...
Yeah, water, he said, I mean, he could, but the, but the, definitely would be a different, difference in the price of what he said, because he'd actually run all the plumbing through the ceiling.
Right, yeah, but, that was the only option, you know, you're up there, you're across, you know, basically, you're just floor, above the ceiling, all the way over that, and all tapping, you're all aligned right there.
Which we approved five hundred dollars, up to five hundred dollars, right?
It's not gonna be bad.
So that we're not gonna...
What we even looked at is going out the front at the end here, but the difference we were having, so different, yeah, using under the rail, so I talked to Deborah with the gardeners, and, and to, to get like a different, um, a double attachment, couple holes, they buy fifteen foot holes, running underneath the decking, and over to the side, and like clamp it along, so, no tripping underneath, and then over...
That sounds like it.
I mean, that sounds like a better fix, and...
Yep, it's perfect.
So, people would have to, but great, okay, go.
Perfect, thank you, cool, all right, anything, nothing else remaining, so that was it, right?
Uh, one other thing, I did get an email reminding us it's time to do our, we do a chimney sweep annual service, and...
I looked to see, because I don't recall it, like, last year, I had done it since nineteen, two thousand nineteen, so, we need to have that done, it's around two hundred and fifty dollars, is what we paid in nineteen, so maybe a little more, but didn't know if you wanted me to, I think Katie used to do it, you know?
Yeah, I forgot to say, the last time I did.
Just a reminder that it's time, you know, it certainly is time, so, I didn't know if you wanted to wait, or you wanted me to say...
I think the other, the schedule left to be done, there's no sense in taking that, so, any chance?
I mean, I have a council call, who knows?
Right, yeah, I'm, we're overdue by three years, so...
Okay, so it was...
It really honestly shouldn't need anything, it really honestly shouldn't need anything, the chimney shouldn't, but...
I think you said last time.
No, but it's, it's good to have a licensed, qualified, especially on a municipal building, to have them come out and check it, um, Garrett, or Jox, or Craig, or whoever cleans your burner, can check your chimney to look at it, but they're not licensed to say, your chimney's good, so...
All right, I T., Gary, you got anything?
Uh, Bill called, he's called us since last meeting, he says I can check anything in the mail, which are, she's looking at her email.
Yeah.
Good, uh, fire requirement from Twitter, Brenda?
I think it's it.
You have the other bit?
Yeah, I think I, I need to talk about, say, that, they're, they're logging, and all, and, and...
Right. And, and...
I, I, I...
We tried, we did try, thank you, considering.
I've been using the, um, the, the fire shield, and, and, too, if you're, well, my boy is like the clutches, I'm not into email, I'm in the fire department email.
All right, so, more, more to do with the fire, fire email, or are we good?
It was, yeah, it was, yeah.
All right.
Bill, Bill, let me know if I'm, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm ready to back, want to do that.
Okay.
I, I...
Good, thanks, Gary.
Um, cool, thanks, Gary, uh, planning commission?
Uh, we didn't have a meeting this month, we're having a meeting next month, I was gonna bring...